Jason, today's episode of the Lee Summit Town Hall podcast is brought to the good people by Budget Blinds of Lee Summit.
Budget blinds.
Jason, it's 2021.
It is a new year.
But while the years changed, there is one thing that remains a constant, and that is Budget Blinds of Lee Summit is still your home for signature series shades.
Continuing to hail our robot shade overlords.
That's right. If you are ready to find all of the shades, all of the home things you need, all you gotta do is go into downtown Lee Summit and see our friends at Budget Blinds of Lee Summit. And tell them Jason Nixon.
Just make this one of your new year's resolutions. And it's easy to take care of.
There you go.
Hello again, and welcome to Lee Summit Town Hall, a weekly podcast about what you can do to make a difference. I'm Jason Norby, and as always, I am joined by a man who has missed me so much. It's Nick Parker, the publisher of Link to Lee Summit.
It's true. You know, we, we've had a few weeks off.
It's been a dark time.
For the holidays. But look, there have been way too many months, Jason, where we have had to record this podcast remotely. And man, I miss having you in the studio.
Oh, man, I tell you what, this whole time, this whole holiday experience has been really difficult. I'm sure it's been difficult for a lot of us. But it is really like the, the things that you miss, these little things, like the time that we get to spend in the studio, all the hours and hours of time that we spend before we hit record and put this thing out on air. All of those things have been acutely missed over the holiday. And I think it was compounded by the fact that we took a couple of weeks off for the show. And, and, and to spend, you know, time with our families and get a little breather and let the new year come in. And thankfully, the world has calmed down and everything's fine and stable and cool. So it's fine.
It's all good.
All good. Nothing's happened. Everything's fine. You didn't miss anything while we were gone. Our unofficial sponsor today are tacos because well, of course it's tacos. It's a new year, but it's the same old us.
Same us, same taco orders. We're always gonna do it.
All right.
Jason, happy new year, buddy.
Happy 2021. I would like to lodge my first complaint about the year. They did not make a miraculous change in tone from 2020. For instance, I'm just off the top of my head, there's still a pandemic happening.
There is, we're still stuck at home most of the time.
That's the worst. And I, it ruins everything. And it did not make my new year's more, more special in any way, shape or form. But we are here in a new year. We are back. We have a little time off. We're refreshed. What have we got working?
Well, let's, 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 let's go backward and review just real quick. I want to review something. We did, Jason, right after the year changed, right after the calendar changed, we did finally get to present a little award to the Abbott family of White Ridge Farms.
I would say that is, the abbots are like the people I came the closest in physical proximity to of almost anyone I wasn't like related to the entirety of the Christmas season. So congratulations to the abbots. But everybody was masked. We were all together. We had a little picture. They got there. They made a, they made a reservation at Subor Latino to get some extra food to go with the tacos that were their prize for such a thing. So I think that was, that was very gratifying that they were so excited, especially Mr. Abbott. He was very hyped for his award.
Well, look, he had a great light display at their house. He should be hyped. Now, here's the thing, Jason. The White Ridge Farm neighborhood has been very, very good to us.
They have. They've been very nice.
They have invited us now two years in a row to come judge their holiday light contest, and it has been fun. But here's the thing, I think it's time to grow. We had a little feedback, some comments.
Expanding their subdivision.
You're right. I'm going to build the houses. You want houses built by me.
Yeah, that's the exact housing that Jason has wanted.
No, you, you, you people don't want that. But look, we had a little feedback after announcing their winning light display. There were some people in other neighborhoods ready to throw down, ready to challenge the abbots and say that their lights were better. So I'm thinking, Jason, my, my mind here is working.
Is it, is it a whirring noise? Is that what we're hearing?
It's, it's, it's a fan in an empty room. It's really what it is.
Fair enough.
But I'm thinking next year, Christmas 2021 might be time to expand and just maybe a link to Lee Summit, Lee Summit Town Hall podcast, citywide holiday lights display contest. I think we're gonna make it happen. So look, I'm gonna spend a few months here. I'm gonna try to figure this out, but everybody stay tuned. All of you wannabe Clark Griswolds.
All you HOA presidents. Bring it there. I think there's two things we have to have. It's gotta be fun. It's gotta be in the good spirit. And, and I'm gonna throw this out. I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put you on the spot here, Nick. Not really, but we're gonna do it. We need to make sure that whatever happens in this process, so we do some good. So perhaps.
100%.
There, there's gotta be a charitable, a giving, a giving piece. If we're gonna branch this beyond simply White Ridge Farm. And I think if White Ridge Farm wanted to put a little money in the kitty of one of our fine charities here in the city of Lee Summit, that would be fine. But if we're gonna go big, might bring in a little outside sponsorship. We're gonna have some other thing. We're gonna raise a little money for some good folks doing good stuff in the city.
So here's the thing, here's what I'm gonna put out there. I want to hear from some, well, anybody, I want to hear from anybody. But also, look, if you're an HOA president, if you are a, if you run a local charity or on a board of directors, or you know, maybe just a volunteer, and you maybe want to see some fundraising happen for your charity of choice. I want to hear from all of you. I want to hear some ideas about how we can make a citywide holiday contest where we can pit some neighborhoods against each other. And we can do some good, Jason. Like you said, let's raise some money. Let's raise some money to help some people in our community.
There you are. So there, we have, we have laid down the gauntlet for the rest of Lee Summit. I want you all to raise yourselves up to be as engaged in the Christmas light game as the fine people of White Ridge Farm. And come together, we're gonna have a good time. We're gonna make some money for some.
And here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this out there, too. We're gonna give tacos away.
We are. There will be.
Reward people's efforts.
We're putting Reggie on the spot here, but I think we can make tacos happen.
Hey, before we get into, into, into some, some meatier stuff, we're gonna talk a little about city council. We're gonna talk a little bit about the Lee Summit R7 School District. I want to do one other quick note, and that is about this podcast. Jason, we are pushing 600 episodes. Congratulations. We're getting there. We've done this for a bit now.
I'm staggered.
For the past couple of years, this has been a three-episode-a-week podcast. We have our, our news link on Mondays where we give you the headlines, events, and happenings coming up in the city. On Wednesdays, Jason, you and I get to talk about some of the conversations and things going on around town. And then Fridays have been, I've tried to do some good feature profiles and one-on-one interviews with people around town. I'm gonna mix up the Friday episodes. We're gonna make a little change. So coming soon, I'm gonna start reaching out to the people to help me with these Friday episodes. We're gonna take a little, little, a little nudge from, from our friends at NPR. And I would like to ask the people of Lee Summit, who are some people in your lives, some residents here in Lee Summit that you think are worth celebrating? Who are, who are some people that you think everyone else in town should meet? I want to come to you and I'm gonna give you a chance to do three or five-minute interview with these people so that you can help introduce some awesome people in town to everybody else.
I mean, I, I don't, I can't find any flaws in this other, other than, does that mean less of you on the air?
Well, yeah. I mean, honestly.
I mean, honestly, that's like the biggest.
Probably what the people really, really want.
People, it's like, I want more cool people and less Nick and Jason is probably what they're actually asking for in the overall scheme of things. So I think that's a really cool idea.
What you and I have learned in, in, in these 500-some episodes, podcasting is fun. Talking to people around town is fun. And there are lots and lots, Jason, we've met tons of people around town that are doing really good things. And I kind of want to share that. I want to give people, more people a voice and more people an opportunity to, to highlight and celebrate the people that make our town the place we call home.
Absolutely. And, and these are, you know, and these can be, and the thing is, is this, this three to five minute, this shorter interview, this shorter little introduction to people. It doesn't have to be, you don't have to like, you know, set a fundraising record for a charitable event, or, or be the volunteer of the year for a giant, or you know, you don't have to be the citizen of the year for the city of Lee Summit. You just need to be someone doing a cool thing, because we can talk about that in that kind of a timeframe. So it's not like the pressure to find, you know, like the most worthy person. Because almost, there are so many people in our community, in every community, that do a little bit of good. And, and even that little bit of good should be celebrated and encouraged. And this is, I think, a really cool thing for it, for you to be doing.
Exactly. So start thinking, think a little bit, think about the people in your life. Think about a neighbor or a teacher, somebody who has inspired you, somebody who's done a little bit of good, who's helped some other people around, just somebody awesome that you think we ought to know. So stay tuned to that. I will be putting something out soon with a link so that you can participate. I think this is gonna be a lot of fun. And we're hoping to get that going in February. Jason, let's dig in.
All right. Is it time to crack open the soap opera?
It is. It's time for the first episode of 2021. I don't even want to do it. I'm tired of that one.
Honestly, there's no soap opera going on at the moment.
There is no. Look, I asked one of our council members recently if, if she would provide a little drama, because you and I need some entertainment. And she declined. She said that wasn't a good idea for the city.
Hey, I want to, here, here's the thing, and I know you'll be shocked by this. That woman is smarter than us.
Well, look, low bar.
I know, but I'm just saying, it's very clear. So there is, there is some stuff happening in general at city council. But this is, I think, a lot of this is sort of keep you up to date, kind of what's going on in the general thing. Stuff that's coming, but not necessarily anything. There's not really anything that's red hot happening right now at city council, which is fine, which I think is, as we have said many times over the years, a, a sign that the city is probably being managed okay if nothing's on fire.
Exactly. The first thing I want to talk about is something that has been kind of a topic of conversation around the community off and on for several months now. And that's a conversation that stems from a recommendation from the Human Relations Commission to change the name of Todd George Road. The update right now and is, is that the, the city council is, has decided to change their policy when it comes to, to street names. And Jason, these are very procedural changes. It's not really that big of a deal. It's just, it's just making it so that there's a format and a way to go through this process. There really wasn't a very clear one before now. So I think they're just, they're just using this opportunity to set things up for what happens in the future. Now, the takeaway here is this, is that the city has talked about for a while now of having a public hearing about this particular street, and they want to get public input from what the rest of the community thinks about, should this name be, be changed? We're still waiting to see when that's gonna happen.
Yeah, absolutely. So, but I will say this policy change does require a public hearing, which wasn't a thing I think that was required before in this process. I think they could just kind of administratively do it and, and, or not do it in this particular case. And I think that that led to perhaps a little bit of paralysis compounded by the pandemic, which of course ruins everything. And, and, and has made this process very difficult for the city council to both figure out a format by which to actually go through what they need to do, but also just actually do it as a thing. So hopefully.
Well, let's be fair, too. It's not an easy conversation, because once again, we find this, we find this conversation, this debate, this dialogue is centered around racial discussions.
Right. And.
And that compounds and slows the process as well.
And, and I think, I, I mean, look, I have been at the forefront of, on this podcast specifically of advocating for having those difficult conversations. But having them on Zoom is, it's not great, Bob.
No, it's, it's, it's slightly better than having it through a text thread where you can get, you can get an inch more context on Zoom than you can get through text. And it's just, it just makes a, an incredibly difficult conversation even more difficult. And so, look, kudos to the city for working through it, for seeing it as an opportunity to set up processes for any future discussions of similar. But I'm, I'm looking forward to them setting a, a, a date and time for, for the public hearing on this specific one concerning Todd George Road.
Right. And hopefully, as we, as we come into the spring and the vaccine becomes more widely distributed, and we go through all of that, and we've, I think we now have a fairly good grasp on most of our social distancing requirements and things to, to minimize risk in, in meetings and things of that nature, that the city will actually get to the point of scheduling this public hearing on this particular issue, sensitive as it may be going forward.
Well, let's move to another thing. And this is, Jason, this will please only you and the four other people in town who have brains like yours.
I'm getting, I'm getting my bat and stance ready. This is right, this is a, this is a fat pitch for me to hit.
This one's coming right down the middle. Uh, look, the, the council has, is second reading this week, but it's on ballot language. It's an ordinance for ballot language for the next election, talking about some adjustments to the city's debt levy. Jason, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna very basically say this, and then you can take over with your, your legalese speak and your boring stuff that most people are gonna turn, tune out.
Way to sell it.
This is not, yeah, this is not raising taxes, and it's really just kind of moving some money around.
Okay. So yes, I, I think, at least I will say this.
That's my dumb guy translation.
That, that is the, that is the dumb guy. So we're gonna start with that, and then we're gonna come back to that dumb guy translation at the end. But in the middle, we're gonna bore some people. And that really, if nothing else, is our brand. And we should go with that. So as of today, the city has a property tax val, assessment that they do for every hundred dollars of assessed valuation. There's like a $1 and a little over 45 cent amount that they tax for city stuff. Part of that goes to general fund, part of that goes to parks, and part of that goes to debt service as, as they go through that process. So what they're doing, or what they're proposing to do, is increase the amount that goes to general fund operations. And I believe it's 10 cents for every hundred dollars. So it would go from 83 cent, 84, 83, 84 cents per to up to that 93, 94 amount. And their plan is to reduce the amount that goes to general obligation debt service. So the less, a lower amount that goes to paying off debts from that as, and balance, so that your tax rate from the city will not change going forward. If you approve this, but it will put more money in the general operating fund to allow the city to do what it wants to, what, what we expect them to do without having to reduce services or cut back on some things of that nature.
Well, and, and I think there is, there's the key point. This allows them to not cut services. And it's a piece of the puzzle, Jason, to continue paying for a series of raises they voted to, to, to give to several groups of employees in the past year.
Right. And I will say this, this is not the thing I anticipated when they were talking about how they were gonna figure out how to pay for some of that stuff going forward. But it is a way to do it. And what this tells us, and.
Isn't that kind of everything in the last 10 months? It's not what we anticipated.
Right. But if, if we roll back to the last time the city came in and asked for a no-tax increase bond issue, right? Which was the, the fire stations and the equipment and the improvements in the police and municipal court building and the, the improved IT infrastructure and all that stuff that they, they put in that package. We talked about how they had a lot more bonding capacity that they could have tapped into than they did. And, and you know, we made our comments about whether they should do it or not, but they didn't use all of it. They really didn't even get all that close to what they could do at the rates that they were doing. This is part of why, right? Because this was, I mean, not this particular thing, but you give yourself that cushion so that should circumstances change, say, we have a massive economic downturn as a result of a global pandemic. I mean, just as a thing to pop off the top of my head, we can, uh, we can hopefully maintain city services without having to overextend the city on debt obligations, or, or massively cut services because we can't afford to pay the people who provide them. So that's what that is. Now, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be super technical for just one more second. Ballot language is only requires or only allows the city to raise the taxes. Because the way that Missouri's constitution is structured, anytime any kind of governmental entity would like to increase the amount of taxes that they charge, even in situations like this, where they're talking about raising one piece but reducing another, they have to go to the ballot to get approval for that raise. So what we're voting on technically, in a limited sense, is just allowing the city to raise the part that goes to general fund obligations. Now, they are putting it in the ballot language, and I think that, you know, honestly, I think the city's fairly trustworthy on this particular point. They're saying it's our intent to offset that as we go through. But that's a, you know, if you, when people start to get into the technical pedantic stuff, this is where they're going to be arguing around this whole process. And, and so I just wanted to make that clear that what we're actually voting on is the ability of the city to raise the, the amount that goes to the general fund. They can cut taxes. Here, here's the secret. The city can cut your taxes anytime they want to without having to ask for your opinion on the subject matter. But if they want to raise your taxes, even a tiny, tiny bit, even 10 cents per hundred dollars, they have to come back to you and ask you to do that. So just keep that in mind that that's why the, the language is on the ballot issue is structured in the way it is, is because of the, what's called the Hancock Amendment in the Missouri Constitution.
Well, and we're gonna, we will, as, as the spring election approaches, we'll dig, we'll dig a little more into that, and we'll, we'll, we'll offer a little more, more insight as people start to consider which way.
Did you say election season's coming?
Oh, it is. And we're gonna get into that in just a little bit, foreshadowing.
You're talking my love language now, Nick.
One more, uh, one more note, uh, from the, the city council side of things is we are hoping, Jason, we are hoping in the next week or two to hear from city council about the market street development project, which.
Green Street Development Project.
Green Street Development. I'm sorry. I apologize.
The farmer's market.
Farmers, the farmer's market, the outdoor performance space, all of these things that we've talked about for many, many years. So we hope to get an update in the next week or two at city council and see where they are at on the selection of a master developer for the process. So hopefully, Jason, hopefully this thing can, can get kicked off and maybe even, maybe, maybe in the spring, we can see some dirt turning.
For the, for the audio only, folks, I have my fingers crossed.
Let's shift gears and let's go over to the Lee Summit R7 School District. Jason, today, we're recording this on Tuesday night, but today, as people listen, the Board of Education will be meeting to discuss learning mode for grades seven through 12. As everyone knows, this week, based on an earlier decision from the board, grades pre-K through six all returned to 100% in learning for those that chose the in-person learning model. Uh, that happened on this Monday. So the discussion comes up now for secondary education. Jason, the, the real, the reality is, is this, the real discussion at the, I think at the district level is they are gonna look at real hard, do they have the staffing and the subpool capacities to take all of the secondary in-person learners back 100%, or are they gonna have to shift to a hybrid model? I think, I think all of, I think the, the data that they're looking at now and, and, and the other things that they, they take into consideration tell them that, that it is time to start shifting back into it. But I think the real discussion, what we're gonna find out is, the real discussion is, can they, can they staff it? And can they keep staff, consistently staff it?
Absolutely. So, and first of all, I want to correct you. The meeting is on Thursday.
Oh, I apologize. Do days mean anything anymore?
According to the calendar, they do. But to me, no, it's all blending together. It's at five o'clock. It's obviously there, it's on YouTube because they're not gonna let people in the building. Um, so you'll have to, you have to tune in that way. And I'm sure as many of these meetings been, it will be well-attended and, and go through that. So last week, when they, when they did the process for pre-K through six, they talked, they had a lot of data that they threw out there. Short version is there was a huge spike in cases, like right over the Thanksgiving timeframe. Over Thanksgiving and the right afterwards, there's been a couple of little bumps since then, but the numbers are started to come down, settle out a little bit as it goes through. Combine that with the continued development of understanding of like how transmission occurs and where those things are happening and all of that stuff. Um, yeah, I think the, the, they, the district is strongly in favor of when it is safe, when they, when it is determined to be safe, to go back to an in-person learning model. The question becomes is, on Thursday, January 14th at 5:00 PM, do we think we're there? Or do we think we're partway there? Or what, or what, you know, what are the benchmarks that they're gonna use to go through that process? So it's gonna be a meeting that'll be, I'm sure, full of politicians talking. And, and, and a lot of stuff that goes around.
Repeated questions.
Many repeated questions. And, and a lot of things that probably were very similar in questions that are there now. I will say that there are some differences in transmission rates and, and effect of things on the older kids versus the younger kids. There's, there's all kinds of science that's out there. But, um, you know, seeing what they've kind of gone through, I would think that you're gonna see the district focus on what are case transmission rates? What are our capacities for substitutes, keeping our teachers in, in thing? All that sort of thing. And keeping in mind, you know, not to rain on anybody's parade here, but you know, the, this metro area has yet to see any of the new variants of the vax, of the, of the virus that are coming in, some of which are, you know, more transmissible, but less ugly. Some are, you know, they're, they're different, somewhat different. We haven't seen any of those impacts yet on our community. And, and with that understanding, so even if they go back to hybrid or whatever, we don't know what that's gonna look like in another month when that inevitably comes to town.
It, it has been interesting to watch. Uh, the Lee Summit School District has been, I would say this, willfully more nimble than other districts in the area have seemed. Where they've, they've kind of made, it, look, it hasn't come without controversy or drama, but they've made the shift. You know, they, they, they started virtual, they went to a hybrid, then they went back to, to, to all virtual. In some ways, I think that's, that's shown some abilities in the district, but I think everybody is, everybody is ready for a decision.
Yeah. But I think even if you get a decision, you know, period, that is made on, on Thursday, understand, everybody needs to keep in their mind that we're not done with this yet, even with the vaccine coming, even with all the things that are coming along. We are not done yet. And until we get to the point where perhaps, and the second or third tier of vaccinations, when the teachers, our teachers start to get their vaccines, we're, we're looking at, you know, this is still a very, very fluid situation. And if the case rates spike, and we have a bunch of teachers that can't teach, we're gonna be right back in a virtual model.
The district has shown both a willingness and a capacity to shift gears when it feels it's needed. So.
Absolutely.
So be, be prepared for that. And, and acknowledge that, that that's, that's a thing they said they were gonna do all along. So they have followed their plan.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's just, people get, I think it's, we, humans tend to lose perspective in these moments and not think about a longer term or a larger frame of picture, right? We, we focus very much on the trees that are in front of us and not, uh, the forest in those. And it's, it's, I think, important to take a, a broader look. And, and that's the look that Dr. Buck and, and the staff are really trying to figure out. What is that best overall picture for that? Because not only does the, you know, whether the benefits of being in person or hybrid or, or virtual be, but the stability of it is also something that they have to weigh. And there's no right or wrong answer. It's just, we're all struggling to go through that whole process. And so just be patient. Listen to what they, how they're coming to their, as much as what the answer is, what they give, what they do, what the board votes on. But how they're arriving at that answer is, I think, as, as telling as to what may come as, as the answer itself that they give.
Well, Jason, I, I gave you a little foreshadowing earlier. We're gonna talk a little bit about an upcoming election cycle.
It's the beginning of silly season.
It is the beginning, right before the holiday winter break, filing period for the Board of Education opened. It closed while the school district was on its break and has now reopened. It will run through January 19th. As of now, five people have filed for what will be two available seats on, on the Board of Education. Those that have filed so far, they actually, all five have filed on the opening day of, of the period. Christine Bushyhead, Ryan Murdock, who is the incumbent and. Christine Bushyhead, Ryan Murdock, who is the incumbent and current Board of Education President, Michelle Cerber, Roderick Spark, and Monty Helm round out the list of, of those who have filed so far. Now, Jason, the other seat that's available is currently held by Julie Doan, and she has not, as of this time, filed to run for reelection.
So there we go. And those are five. So we will have a, regardless of whether Julie Doan files or not, we will have a contested election for the seats. And hopefully that means that we'll be able to do some interviews and get people on to, uh, talk about their issues and their roles and what have you. This will be an interesting, because I remember last year, right? We had all our conversations lined up, ready to go for the board. And then, you know, the infinite wait happened and the world shifted and changed on us in the two months that we had, the, the election was delayed and all the things that, that went into that. It was the thing, but I think we're going to have a, you know, every year we think, well, what are we going to talk about this year, right? Things have been, you know, Dr. Buck's been in there. Nobody's calling for his head yet. And, and, and we're dealing with, well, we have a lot to talk about as it turns out, as we're going to go through there. So be interesting to see what this election brings.
Well, we will, uh, in, in the coming weeks, we're going to, we will start talking a little bit about the Board of Education. We'll talk about the role that the board members play in the school district. And then we'll start to, we'll start to hone in some, Jason, on what we think some of those challenges are going to be that they will, the next body, uh, will, will face. And then in the weeks leading up to the April election, we will, we will get our interviews with those candidates and get their, their voices and opinions on, on those topics as well as, as some others that they are likely to bring up. I look forward to it. Jason, uh, you know, we joke a lot that we love the silly season, but I really look, I look forward to the interviews with candidates just to get those perspectives on what they think is important in our community.
Absolutely. I think it's, it's something that's worth doing. And, and I think, you know, we've, I mean, you know, not to break my shoulder, patting myself on the back here, but I think we do a pretty good job of, of trying to dig in a little bit, give everybody a little bit of a, a unique view at each of the candidates and, and what they, what they want to talk about. And, and some of the issues that we see, you know, as the people who sort of talk about this on a, a week-to-week basis, uh, and make sure that we, we dial in on those and, and get that so we can flesh out, you know, what the differences are, um, in all of these, these sorts of things as we go forward.
And selfishly, a handful of candidates is a little easier for us to deal with than when we're trying to squeeze nine or 10.
Plus, plus city council. Remember that was last year. It's like nine plus the city council candidates. It was a, it was a full boat. And, and I know we're all looking forward to 2022. We have the, the board race for, and the mayor. So it's going to be a peach coming that year.
Well, we're not going to worry about it yet. We're just going to focus on 21. Jason, that's going to wrap us up for this week. It is good to see you again. I'm glad that we are back for another year of the Town Hall Podcast. That'll wrap us up. We'll talk to everybody next time.